All right, now we'll be quiet.
I thought I had the wrong one.
I do too.
All right, for the record, I did my job.
You always do.
Oh, no, but you know, technical difficulties cannot be avoided.
I'm gonna forward to Beth.
No, she needs a panelist. If you forward her that.
I got it. I got it. Here I am. Got it. Thank you.
Well, I forwarded to Rob, so I don't know if he'll get on.
He'll get in as you. I did that once, like many years ago. I forwarded my thing and there were two Daphnes.
I just didn't have, I just had the one I had wasn't.
Ned and Chris, how's it going?
Things are going well. We are enjoying the end of our senior year.
Is the board meeting off limits for senior assassin? Like, we're not gonna see that play out?
You should not unless someone gets into our houses.
Oh. My, so you know, you guys know my son's a senior, so he's living this up and he got, he got his team ski masks. So yesterday, they were going to get someone on the street at seven o'clock in the morning wearing ski masks and running around with water guns. And would you know what? Somebody called the police.
Oh, yeah, that's happened to a few teams so far.
Well, don't wear ski masks.
Exactly. Yeah.
So anyway.
People without ski masks.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, it's not endorsed by the district, but.
No, it's not an official school event.
It is not, but I'm glad to see that your seniors are having fun. It's really nice to see. It's a little bit of normalcy.
And.
I'm not sure Jean is able to be a panelist.
Oh, she's.
She is now.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find Brian.
Who's not here?
Brian.
Brian, okay.
If you're not here, raise your hand.
I'll take a second.
Um, Jean is still not promoted.
Just by.
She's also in the guest now. Okay.
I think we're missing Brian. He might be in the audience. Beth, I saw already.
I don't see him in here. I just, I just reset the link.
Okay, there he is. All right. Are we good to go, Mr. Bolden?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Public Meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the public attend our community, our meetings. The Board and the School District operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items, on the published agenda, or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves a right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending our meeting.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA, 1046 at sequentia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet, and the Trenton Times on January 6th, 2022, and amended on April 22nd, 2022. It was also distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves a right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that meetings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon the member, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18838.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions, refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only votes, otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
Betsy Baglio.
Here.
Beth Barron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mara Franceschi.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Robert Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Can I get a motion D1 adoption of the minutes for April 26th? Debbie, second, Mara.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Beth Barron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. So we're gonna move on to the Board President's Report. And if it's okay with Dr. Kelly, I would like to move some things around. So the first thing I'd like to do is, I think we have a video to play for Teacher Appreciation Week.
We do.
You want me to keep that up?
Yes, please. I don't think we can see it on the screen though, Matt.
My bad.
We don't see it.
Yep, got it. I realized that the second I started it. Funny. Not so funny. Everyone's good now, right?
You just have to play it.
You can see it.
We can see it.
Great.
That was really lovely. And just a thank you to all the teachers, administrators, staff that look after all the students in Princeton Public Schools, including those administrators on our call tonight. Thank you for all you do for kids. We're very grateful. Dr. Kelly, what I would like to do is if move your report with my report. You go first, and then there's some things missing. So if you go first, then I'll, if you're okay with that, please go first. Thank you.
I am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Because this evening's agenda is personnel, I typically would not have superintendent's comments. So if you will allow me this moment, truth and transparency have always been a critical part of my value system throughout my career. Therefore, I must pull back the shade tonight and shine a light on what's happening. As an experienced educator, longstanding superintendent, and seasoned leader, I'm qualified to evaluate staff. In particular, this school year, I have found that Principal Latimer met six of seven state standards for school leader effectiveness. Furthermore, she operated with the right amount of professionalism, knowledge, and agility necessary to be successful here or at any school in our district. I would like to go on public record this evening to say that any concerns made against Ms. Latimer have been objectively and by a third party discovered to be largely unfounded. She has done a commendable job during a very challenging school year. As Board President Kendall will describe, as she plans for that transition, I am urging Princeton Middle School community to welcome and embrace Ms. Latimer, knowing that I fully and unequivocally support her leadership. For President Kendall, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kelly. So what we're gonna do tonight is the student, board reps, Ned Erickson and Krishan have reached out and they've asked for some time. And I'm gonna give them my time and my comments. I want to say just before we start, and this will begin public comment, so we will hear from the student, board reps, their people that they've asked to speak on the students' behalf, and then we'll move into public comment. And I think there's another board, a board member or two might have a comment, and then we will go over to you, Chris and Ned. But before we move into the public comment, I just want to remind everyone of a couple of basic, basic things to consider. We want to hear from our stakeholders. In the past few weeks, there have been a lot of rumors. And along with the rumors, there has been an unfortunate lack of civility. We can disagree. But I hope now and going forward, we can do it respectfully. We have a number of people at this meeting tonight who want to speak. And so I asked you to please limit your comments to three minutes. You'll have phones, so please set your timer for three minutes when you speak. And when the timer goes off, please wrap up your comments. I don't want us to be in the position of refereeing, but there are a lot of people who want to speak, and so please respect those limits and, and wrap up your comments after three minutes. And now with that, I think Debbie Bronfeld has something she wants to say. And if any other board member wants to speak before the student reps begin, please raise your hand.
Thank you. Thank you. I am in my sixth year on the school board and have been a member of the Personnel Committee almost every year. The Personnel Committee meetings are always closed to the public. We discuss confidential and personal information about the district staff. Each board member, when elected, pledges to follow strict duties and procedures. We re-pledge every year. There are many school board rules, regulations, and policies that we legally must follow. This includes keeping personnel information private and confidential. Our school board, like all New Jersey school boards, are governed by the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, also referred to as the Sunshine Law. This act lays out the rules about how decision-making government bodies meet, conduct transactions, and vote. And at every open meeting, we must provide the public access, public comment. A few years ago, a second public comment time was added to the first part of our monthly meeting. This was added to ensure all voices on all subjects were heard by the board. It was very hard reading the many letters I received last week. The way some of the letters went after Dr. Kelly was unacceptable to me. Dr. Kelly is the leader of our district. Being a woman in power is hard. Being, and being a black woman in power is even harder. And Dr. Kelly is being attacked for the job we hired her to do. She was approved 10 to 0 to become Princeton Public School Superintendent. Not an easy community to work in and not an easy district to lead. With that said, I will end by stating all Princeton Public School personnel issues are confidential, shared with the superintendent, the school board, the HR staff, and the individuals, individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. I couldn't have said that better myself, and I didn't. Michelle.
I'll try to be brief because I, Debbie has said a lot of what, what I wanted to say. Thank you, Debbie. You know, I have the distinction of having been an elected official in this town for a really long time. And I've been overseeing a lot of controversies. And I just wanted to say that I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed at the tenor of some of the communications received, the personal attacks, the lack of civility. And, and probably most distressing is that people are saying things that are either uninformed, misinformed, or untrue. It is really, really hard being in leadership in this town, both as a female and as a black woman. And I, I'm just wanted to express my concern and my hope that people can return to a level of civility. You can be unhappy, you can disagree, you can even be angry. But the attacks that I've seen, not only on our superintendent, but on Principal Ebony Latimer are simply unacceptable. And, and so as an elected member of this board, I think it's really important that I express that. That's my opinion. And I'm hoping that as we go forward, people can figure out how to communicate effectively in a way that does not involve personal attacks or professional disparagement of people that then we turn around and ask every day to care for our children and educate our children because we're setting a really poor example. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Betsy.
And I want to thank my colleagues again. You said it very well. I'll just add a lot of the letters we received last week spoke to equity in this district and what people believe equity means in this district. Debbie and I co-chair the Equity Committee, and we welcome you to engage in this conversation with us. We all believe in equitable opportunities for our students. And so our Equity Meeting is Monday, May 16th, 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be on the school calendar, and we truly invite you to join with us as we work to make this district better for all students.
Thank you, Betsy. All right. And with that, Chris and Ned, thank you for your patience. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Kendall, and thank you, everyone, for having us. Good evening. We like to start by strongly condemning any racism or sexism that has circulated over the last week. Hate has no home here in Princeton, and we hope that tonight's discussions and ones in the future will remain civil. With that, we do think that it's necessary to share our concerns regarding the direction that this district appears to be heading in. The PBS students are hurting, and it should be no surprise after these two long years of COVID. In a time like this, our district needs leadership and transparency. But we, as students, have found it hard to feel represented and listened to by Valley Road. Last year, we made it very clear that student voices mattered and needed to be heard. And in a letter to the community this summer, the leaders of this district expressed the excitement that they had about listening to our lived experiences in the Princeton Public Schools. But beyond a simple rigid survey, which related little to the lived experiences of students, there has been no effort made by our leadership to get to know us and our needs. A district cannot be simply run without consideration of the students within it, let alone, let alone without the opinions of the parents and even the teachers.
We're also extremely concerned by the coming departure of this district's science supervisor, one of our most committed and innovative educators, a leader who has implemented project-based learning to connect science instruction to daily lives of students, developed and supported our district's teachers, and built upon our world-class research program, which was recently recognized with a $110,000 grant by Samsung. They've gained the respect of students and teachers alike and have been adamant in their support of our ELL and special ed science students. Our schools are only as good as the educators within them, and it's both worrying and telling that one of our most successful and committed educators no longer feels able to do her job in this current climate. I wanted to thank the Board for this opportunity. It's been clear that they've taken our desire for representation to heart and have actively listened to student voices this past year, and it's our hope that you hear us tonight. I'd also just like to add to any students who plan on speaking, please speak professionally and respectfully. Keep your speeches to fact and remember that your words will reflect upon the students in general. And with that, I'd like to introduce four of our peers and this district's students' leaders. We've invited them to share their concerns and experience within this district, and they will be taking the floor now, starting with Joyce Lynn.
Hi, my name is Jason Brobe. I'm a senior at PHS, and I have been a part of the school districts since seventh grade. And I would like to start off by thanking board members for allowing us to speak and share our concerns regarding the state of equity in the district and specifically at Princeton High School. At the beginning of the year, I was contacted by Mr. Schmuel to participate in the Bell Network, where students came up with a variety of demands for the district to adhere to. And as a black woman at PHS, there were many changes I was passionate about and motivated to discuss with my equity planning team and the leader of the district. It has been a year of conversations and suggestions, and it has been made clear to me that my voice was not being considered by the district leadership due to the lack of action that followed these conversations. And during multiple, during multiple of our meetings, students on the Bell net, Bell Committee, sorry, suggested that Mr. Schmuel should be added to the administrative team. And as students, we felt like having Mr. Schmuel in these meetings would be very beneficial because he keeps direct contact with PHS students and has shown the initiative to listen to our concerns. And unlike other administrators, Mr. Schmuel has been a crucial part of achieving equitable change at PHS because he listens. And unfortunately, our request to bring Mr. Schmuel into the committee was denied by the leader of the district, even though the request was coming from students. And another concern that I want to bring up, to bring up is the villainization of our student and parent voices. There have been many people in the community who have undermined our concerns by claiming that our recent actions have been because of the district leadership's race. And while we all recognize that being a black woman with authority in a predominantly white community, community may lead to instances where you are demonized and face racism because of your position, I feel like it was highly inappropriate to resort to claims of racism because students and parents are rightfully questioning authority and, and decision-making because we are considered, concerned about our school community. Our concerns have nothing to do with race and have nothing and have everything, sorry, to do with deciding what is best for the students and faculty. I hope that the school board understands where the students are coming from and acknowledge the significance of the student outcry. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you, Jocelyn.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kiarra Torres Solivares, and I'm a senior at PHS. And I've been a part of the school district since I was in kindergarten. I wanted to start by touching on a few initiatives that many BIPOC and ELL students have worked on this year in order to highlight the cultural diversity that exists within PHS. With the support of Mr. Schmuel and several BIPOC faculty, we developed the first-ever school-wide Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. The committee, which organized our cultural assemblies and created the Dia de los Muertos altar in the Newmana Gallery, included students of all Latinx backgrounds and ESL students. Additionally, our Black History 365 team organized the Black History Month Gospel Assembly, along with other Black History initiatives, which again was the first school-wide Black History celebration. After three years of experiencing scarce actions behind the words of administrators who have wanted to promote diversity and equity in the school, having a principal that has worked hard to put actions behind his beliefs of equity and include minority students into the conversation has made me proud to be a part of this school. I and many other BIPOC students have worked so hard this year on these equity initiatives, and it hurts to see that the leader of this district has yet to ascend a single one of them. It hurts to see that their conversations of equity planning have had no follow-through or visible action. We wish that the head of the district demonstrated her support and took the time to show up in support of minority voices. These past two weeks specifically, we have not felt that the student voice has been, we have felt, we have not only felt that the student voice has been drowned out by district administrators, but even part of the community have not allowed us to share experiences with articles being released telling us to allow this process to run its course. I also wanted to touch on the lack of inclusivity of the ELL community in the equity planning. Apart from the fact that none of the ELL students have been asked to voice their opinions on equity in the school, the leader of this district has been making assumptions on the ESL program based on faulty survey data. The scale of these surveys, which were meant to measure how students feel in our school environment, provided a 1 to 5 reverse scale, meaning that a higher number would correlate with negative perception, while a lower number would correlate with positive perception. The way the scale of the surveys was presented created misinterpretation for ELL students, causing inaccurate conclusions to be drawn. Not only this, but data presented to the school board by the superintendent has failed to include an ethnic category for the Hispanic or Latinx students, completely taking away the Latinx experience from these conversations. Lastly, I would like to say that tens of thousands of dollars have been spent on equity consultants, while the district still fails to provide the ESL community with sufficient bilingual aids to help them academically succeed. I appreciate the time that the Board is taking to listen to us students, and I hope that our voices are truly taken into consideration when deciding the future of the district and the individuals that lead it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiara.
Hello, everyone. I want to especially thank the Board for taking time to listen to the community's concerns. My name is Ngung La. I am a junior at Princeton High School. And I would like to preface that I am blessed with the opportunity to work with the high school and middle school during my time here, either that be for community work or equity. And it is clear that there has been an attempt to emphasize student voice. We see it. But while the district leadership has listened to our problems, students want to see solutions. In response to that, we have seen a surplus of surveys, which have caused several students and staff members fatigue and confusion due to the lack of concrete actions or plans that are clear to the student body or families. We want to be heard, but we also want to connect deeply and communicate on a human level. Furthermore, as Ned mentioned earlier, with our science supervisor leaving, I wish to express my deep concern over future funding for the research program and the continuation of ELL programs. The Samsung Project was only accomplished by collaborating researchers with the ELL program to win $110,000 for the district. And it is that flourishing programs need consistent and abundant support. Teachers can't do this alone, and I'm endlessly grateful to them, but imagine if we had more support. Previously, I spoke to amplify and advocate for the implementation of Asian-American Pacific Islander curriculum. I was excited, and I'm still hopeful. However, I am deeply disappointed and profoundly hurt as certain leadership has failed to adequately recognize the API community fully. Despite claims to promote equity and justice, incorrectly disaggregated data was shown to the school board despite concerns raised previously at an equity meeting. This included presenting statistics combining white and Asian races and not including Latinos as a category. Asians and Latinx communities are here. We have been here. We do not want to be erased. And the struggles of Asian-Americans and Latinx communities alike are not to be brushed aside. Please bear in mind these points as we continue to move forward. We speak up because we care. Thank you very much for listening to these concerns that my peers and I bear.
Thank you, Nan.
Hello, my name's Eli Edelman, and I would like to thank the Board for hearing us out and being so encouraging of us speaking at meetings and student, listening to student voice. So as Non and Joyce have said, we are members of the Bell Network Circle Team, the Building Equitable Learning Environments Circle Team. And we were invited as a voice for the student body, especially those in marginalized communities. We were asked, we didn't volunteer or reach out first. As three students on the, on the committee are people of color, we have black, Asian, and Latina. And I was asked as a representative of the queer and disabled community. And yet, multiple times at meetings, we have felt that district leadership has dismissed us and said that, and implied that we weren't the right voices to be speaking out, including claims that we would be fine without any equity work in the school personally, and that we do not know the struggles of our peers. And while we have multiple times agreed that we have often been tokenized and been the students invited to speak, and that other students' voices need to be heard, it is completely incorrect that we do not experience discrimination. I know that it might not be clear looking at me that I do, but I am a non-binary. I know that it might not be clear looking at me that I do, but I am a non-binary and I am disabled. And multiple times, district leadership has done discriminating acts against me for my gender, even in the smallest way of misgendering me multiple times. Certain district leaders have never gotten my pronouns right or apologized when I have corrected them in emails or in meetings or in personal conversations. I always have my pronouns in my Zoom name, and it's in my email address. This is something that we bring up in the Bell Network. This is something that students have brought up, and it shows that we are the students that have experiences in school that we should be able to share about and listen to and see actions. For district leaders who perpetuate the idea that they are incredibly in support of student voice and have said that they want to act and collaborate and listen to students, it is concerning that they are dismissing and/or ignoring student opinions and concerns. Furthermore, in the Bell Network, which is a place that we are supposed to all check our power at the door, leave it there, and experience a collaborative, equal learning and planning environment, district leadership has never shared any actions or plans put in place to further equity, stating that it cannot be shared with us because that is not the process. And while we are aware that certain things cannot be shared with us legally, we do think us students have felt that we can't give our thoughts and opinions on furthering equity in the school if we do not know what actions are being put in place and are going to be put in place. So we cannot do our job on the circle team because we are being blocked from doing it. This is another example of how district leadership has excluded students from actual equity work actions and planning and just listening to us, but not necessarily hearing us. One of the biggest student goals on the Bell Network Committee was to work on truth and transparency from the admin at Valley Road, to build trust and relationships within the community, especially between the students and staff and with a district leadership, as that is a relationship that is vital to the school district. However, this has not been built at all. It's only decreased under new district leadership. There was so much hope at the beginning of the year, and I personally have been involved in activism at the school and equity work at the school since the beginning of my freshman year, serving on the Equity Committee for Writing, the student, Princeton Public Schools Statement of Equitable Values, my freshman and sophomore year. However, there is so much hope for this year, and there has not been a relationship built that can build on all of our activism and can bring more students into activism. The main thing that I would want to talk about here is how the reaction to students voicing their concerns has shifted the narrative away from our original concerns and has become a matter that has caused, and this is very concerning to me, an air of fear and concern of teachers and students at the school and in the district in general, at all schools in the districts, where it is feared to speak out. There is a fear of retaliation, or that we will not be heard, or that our voices will be misconstrued and used in a way that damages that completely contradicts our own personal values. The fact that I walk around the school and hear people talking in very low voices because they're concerned, or people just seeing people that I know as older figures who I look to for support being upset and seeing other students in migraines and younger being upset and concerned for our programs in our schools is something that should not be happening in a school. Yes, as an 18-year-old, I am an adult, but I am still a child within the school district. I should not have to be concerned for my own education and my own district climate. Student voices should not only be listened to, heard, but they should be celebrated. It should not be fear, students should not fear speaking out. They should be ecstatic to speak out and share our voices. Thanks again for listening, and I hope that our concerns and our side of the narrative will be heard and absorbed by not only the board, but all the members of the PPS and Princeton community.
Okay, thank you, Eli. Ned and Chris, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to thank the board for allowing us and our peers this opportunity. This is all we had to say. It's our hope that this district, we want nothing more than stability and I think understanding within this district, and it's our hope that we can all learn from this. And again, to any students who plan on speaking, please speak factually and respectfully, but do speak honestly.
So Ned and Chris, first, I want to thank you for reaching out and proposing this format. I am grateful for your leadership. The students are lucky to have two just very well-meaning and respectful and caring leaders such as yourselves. Eli, Kiara, Nan, and Jocelyn, thank you for speaking. I know it's very, it could be intimidating, maybe not. I try not to think about the people who are watching, and then, you know, it's easier. But thank you for speaking out, for sharing your truths. We want to hear them. And please know, you're welcome to come and speak to us anytime, either in this forum or privately, whatever you're comfortable with. And I believe this is the beginning of a conversation and not a one-time conversation, so just thank you very much. And I commend your civility and your respectfulness. Thank you. And did anyone else have any comments? No. Okay, and for that, Mr. Bolden, we will move on to the public comment. And just a reminder, please set your timer. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. When your timer goes off, please wrap up. And this is a new thing I'd like to try because I think that's something we can all manage. And Mr. Bolden, can we please start with Scarlett? I believe Scarlett is in middle school, and I would like her to go to sleep soon, so let's start with her.
Scarlett.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Scarlett Lu. I'm a seventh grader from Princeton Middle School. My question might not be directly related to tonight's topic, but I think it is very important. Thank you so much for considering setting the Lunar New Year as a school holiday in the future school calendar. Since the end of the school year is approaching, I am hoping to see the Lunar New Year holiday on the 2022 to 2023 school calendar. Do you know when a decision will be made? It would mean a lot to the Asian-American community in Princeton to have this important holiday recognized. Thank you. Thank you for your understanding and consideration.
Well, Scarlett, thank you, and you've been emailing us, and we appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the AAPI community. And I'm just gonna, Dr. Kelly, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but if you would be able, I know we don't do a Q and A, but I think we have to have a 12 and under exception.
The S Y, the school year 2223 calendar for President Kendall was approved by the board, I believe at your last board meeting. There is a no homework weekend because the observation actually falls on a weekend for that year. But we will be looking at all of the holidays for the future. The Ad-Hoc Committee has not come back together yet. We just wanted to get the date out for next school year because we'll be starting school earlier.
Okay, so it's a work in progress. So Scarlett, please stay tuned, and please know that we hear you. And it's very important for the board to appropriately recognize all holidays. Okay, and Mr. Bolden, I'm going to turn public comment back to you.
Howard Cheng.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Howard Cheng. I'm living in Princeton and have two daughters, graduated from PHS in recent years. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight. I just have several questions for our dear BOE Board members. First, regarding the movement in town to save Mr. Schmuel, do you feel both BOE Board and PPS Superintendent are facing a crisis of the public trust? Do you think the PHS students, teachers, and the families have publicly denounced our was good district leaders? Second, PHS students were saying that Mr. Schmuel was great and should stay. The Superintendent Office oppositionally read him underperforming, and his contract may not be renewed unconditionally. What is the BOE's position? Where is the BOE's oversight on this matter? What will be the BOE's plan to restore the stability, consistency, and quality back to PHS? Third, many students and families have been strongly demanding a boys volleyball program at PHS. It's long overdue. A budget of $30,000, again, a budget of $30,000 can positively impact our students' life and provide a unique team sports experience for more than 30 high school boys. Unfortunately, no actions were taken by BOE in the past six-plus years. And a real work to serve our students' well-being simply could not be done. At the same time, the consulting fees, over $300,000 approved by BOE were wasted for nothing but dividing this community. This is mind-blowing to me. People are questioning one BOE can be more financially responsible and refocus on addressing the real issues in our school environment. Last, the students who talked at the beginning are so encouraging. I'm so glad for them to get their voices out and share their first-hand experience in school. These young kids are the hope of this country. Thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Jen Bigioni.
Good evening. I'm Jen Bigioni, the mother of two district graduates and a 28-year employee at Princeton High School. I want to bring your attention to one of our resignations, Marudhila Bajaj, a woman who might be small in stature, but she has a huge heart and big ideas, and she is one of the most amazing educators I've ever had the pleasure of working with. I remember leading a summer flex PD on problem-based learning. Marudhila somehow snuck in and popped herself in the back of the Learning Commons teaching space. A colleague had a question. I was brainstorming with him. Marudhila spoke up with such an insight, and even though she was several levels superior, I felt like she was partnering with me when she answered the question during the PD that I was facilitating. It takes a special person to be the authority on something, which she is, yet shared the space so gracefully. Marudhila has had to work under four different assistant superintendents and three different superintendents, having to implement their visions district-wide. But when she took on a second full-time position as supervisor of science, she could implement her vision, and what a vision it is. Every award our amazing kids get in science, don't forget to thank her. I and so many others were just waiting for the opportunity for Marudhila to be able to implement her vision district-wide. I am so sorry for my colleagues and for our students who are losing the great Marudhila Bajaj to another district because we didn't appreciate her greatness and someone else did. Thank you, Marudhila. In your five years here, you've created what I hope is, selfishly for us, a lasting legacy. And I wish you all the best in your new venture. They are truly so lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Winfrey.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rachel Winfrey. I'm the parent of two kids in the Princeton school system. So I recently learned about the changes that Dr. Kelly and other school administrators are proposing to make to Princeton Public Schools, and I spent the past week talking to parents, school staff, and people with experience on the school board, as well as watching videos of the school board meetings when on this past spring. I just want to share with you the big picture on what I've learned. The current school administrators are trying to radically change Princeton Public Schools. Their overarching goal seems to be to detract our school system, that is, to remove the opportunity for advanced students to take advanced courses. They're going at this various ways, and I just want to give you some examples. First, the school administrator hired a well-known proponent of eliminating accelerated and advanced math classes, Dr. Millow of Rowan University, to advise on how to redo our math curriculum. He recommended, for example, that PHS terminate our math offerings at precalculus for seniors. Although the school board has tried to reassure parents that this plan won't be implemented, the truth is, I understand it, that the superintendent does not need school board approval to change or replace courses. One change, in fact, has been made already, which was to prohibit our strongest math students in the middle school from taking both Algebra II and Geometry. This means that from now on, the students who go through the public middle school won't be able to take the most challenging math courses available to seniors at PHS. Second, the outside firm hired by the school administration to advise on how to do our strategic plan likewise has a strong pre-existing political bias. This firm states that their goal in educational reform is equality of outcome, not equality of opportunity or equal allocation of resources, but equality of outcome. That makes no sense for the reality of Princeton Public Schools. We have a tremendous range of students with diverse interests and goals. That is a strength of an academically excellent public school, that young people with different life goals and paths can be in school together. If you take away the most challenging track, of course, is the parents with the financial means to provide a strong education for their kids will simply leave the public school system. This is what's happening at other public schools all around the country that have gone down this same detracking path. What troubled me most in watching hours of presentations by school administrators was the lack of appreciation for the academic excellence of our students that was displayed throughout. School administrators almost seem to view our intellectually most high-achieving students and the teachers who support them as a problem that needs to be fixed. Is this the direction we want to go and to close the achievement gap by making it more difficult for our best students to excel? I also felt a real lack of empathy on the part of the school administrators for the kids in our school system who are intellectually advanced. How is it equitable to these children to make them sit through classes that they thoroughly understand already? All children learn best when they're taught at their own appropriate level. When my son was in Princeton Public Schools and before he was old enough to take the accelerated track, he would come home from school and say, "I just watch the clock all day, Mom. They made me do the same worksheets on things I know already, over and over." That's not equity. That's heartbreaking. I've done a bit of review of the past months here because I want people to know what's happening, and I think many people don't know. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add, and we don't do a Q and A, so we'll move on to the next guest, Mr. Bolden, next speaker. But the school board, every December, approves, reviews, and proves a course of study, which lists every course to be offered at Princeton High School. So again, we talk about, I began the meeting by saying that there are a lot of rumors, and a lot of it is based, a lot of it's just not true, and then it's also, you know, not helpful. So I just wanted to clarify, the school board annually votes on all the courses that are going to be offered to our students at Princeton High School.
Dr. Seepin Bailey.
Oh, hello, everyone. I unfortunately didn't have, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, this meeting took me by surprise because I've been participating in other activities, but lost sight that this is even in question. And I have to say that I wish I was better prepared to say some remarks, but I think the most thing I can say at this time is that I feel completely heartbroken. I feel in shock. I wanted to call the attention that I think it's incredible that we have resilient and incredible smart student voices that I respect so much. I also think that everybody in this meeting are my neighbors and the people that I have grown to love in the last six years that I'm here. But I think it's incredible, incredibly difficult as a woman of color that came with professional talents into a town that I know that I could never amount to be good enough for many reasons. And I'm sorry for getting a little emotional, but I came to Riverside, and there was a principal, Cyrillo, and then I met an incredible music teacher that came to be principal, and then he didn't get the gig. I was part of that search committee. And then he didn't get the gig. I was part of that search committee. I joined parent council. I've been vice president for diversity and inclusion. I'm very involved. Not just a person that would just complain, but really try to actively just contribute. And I remember him not getting the job. Then I remember working alongside Valery Orick. And then I remember all the things that came with that appointment and the pain of losing that principal. And then I was part of giving feedback to the district. And then I was in the search committee for Mark and work hard. And then also have to bear all my children, losing that principal, and then we get Ebony. And then it's like all the things happened from scapegoating, from having internalized oppression for wanting a savior, knowing that she would never be good enough because we need a savior, and she needs to be extra good three times, four times, five times. And even with our own people of color, we have our very own issues specifically in homogeneous communities that we have never had a hero. And to see right now, if we can just observe in this meeting and seeing what happened with the principal of the high school before, we have a history of not retention. So I would be there to just look at these two women and say that by any means, that's a problem because most of the things that have been said here tonight being true, they inheriting that problem. And that's what happened when you touch the center of that, when you're calling for diversity and inclusion, this is what happened. What's happening in this meeting, look who gets villainized tonight and who's the savior. And I expected that of Princeton, but I also know that we can do better than this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Bernstein?
Bernstein, thank you. I am a junior at Princeton High School. I have a couple concerns, and I will try to keep them concise. I unfortunately cannot see the name or pronouns of the previous speaker. And while I am, I would consider myself allied with all the concerns of students who've joined. I very much agree that the wrong people are being villainized. Principal, I'm so sorry. Principal Schmuel, it was brought to my attention, and I have spoken with a teacher about this, lied about his vaccination status to staff. His vaccination status is his business. But that is a breach of integrity that I cannot condone. There are teachers with heart conditions. There are teachers with lots of other conditions. They need to be given appropriate information. And for him to lie and say he is vaccinated when he is not is just so incredibly inappropriate. And I cannot stand by it. I also have some concerns regarding the disability, justice, and mental health of students. I have been unable to go to school for several years due to mental health reasons. And unfortunately, in my health class, I was given inaccurate information about mental health. This year, I was unable to do it, but next year, I'm hoping to begin a Project Let's chapter. Project Let's is an anti-carceral mental health resource for suicide prevention. They do not engage with law enforcement, and they believe that people should have mind freedom, which is essentially the right to talk about their feelings in a forum where they are not at risk of being harmed by psychiatry and its abuses. I am myself a psychiatric survivor. I have thankfully not experienced the worst trauma by any means of some of my peers. But I think a lot of people do not know the reality of what happens to people who are suffering with disabilities and mental health issues, and they are often treated inappropriately, and there are policies that are not based in actual science that allow that to continue. I hope in my senior year I can make real progress with that, but I thought it was something I should bring attention to. And then just to circle back to the thing about Principal Schmuel, I cannot condone that, and I find that, and I am seeing eye rolls from one of these students.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make a quick comment that the students also do not condone that actions? And this is something that we have talked about, and I would also-
I just want to say, I really don't, I'm not comfortable with this conversation. This is not the forum. We cannot be, you're allowed to talk about anything you want, but we're getting on to an employee's medical status, and I'm just not comfortable at this point continuing. And you know, Eli, you know, I want everyone to communicate, but I think we're at the line, and I'm just not comfortable continuing with this anymore. I'm happy to talk about offline. Could we please go on to Jill North?
Jill?
Yes, hi. I wanted to talk about the Princeton Public Schools' strategic plan. I was at the community forum on Thursday where Performance Fact made a presentation regarding the strategic plan, which they said will involve, quote, "equity-centered strategic planning." I am someone who cares deeply about equity, and I work hard to make my own field of philosophy, and especially philosophy of physics, which is largely white and male, more equitable. However, I want to express deep concern by the concept of equity that the strategic plan seems to be aiming at, which is equity defined as, quote, "producing equal outcomes for all students." It is that kind of idea that lies behind the recommendations of Dr. Milu, the educational consultant hired by the district, to remove all calculus pathways from the high school. I would like to urge the district to adopt a different conception of equity that we should all be aiming for, something like the best possible outcome for each individual child, which includes special attention given to those children who need more support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff. I have two daughters in the school district. And first of all, thank you for the district leadership and BoE. Let me first say that I condemn any type of racist attacks in any forum. All I'm discussing today is professional, so nothing personal. First of all, I'm very proud of our outspoken student representative in this meeting. I hope you have heard the students and will take actions. Princeton is a very special place for me. We moved here last year because of the Great School District, the parents and students. What happened in the last two weeks really opened my eyes. First, I want to understand the ultimate purpose of the strategic planning project by hiring external consultants. There had been a lot of discussion on equity in that project. But what is equity? Of course, we want to have equitable opportunities for everyone. But can we have equal outcomes? I agree with the previous parent. I don't know how that's going to happen. Do we reduce the level for everyone? Get rid of AP classes? Get rid of accelerated tracks? I have seen many examples in my past district and other state where they have decreased the level of curriculum, reduced the number of gifted programs, all in the names of equity. Are we doing something similar here? I don't know now, and I hope not. To achieve equity and reduce achievement gap, we need to support the low-performing students, but not sacrificing the high-achieving students. The second topic in regards to a lot of rumors recently, as some of you have said in the forum, is that why have there been so many rumors recently? Like getting rid of the AP calculus class, the high school principal leaving. So does that come from nowhere? I think that probably shows that parents may have lost confidence in BoE and school district to do their right thing. Please reflect on this and make things more transparent in the future. Let's build Princeton Public School a better school district together. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Andre Penn. I'm a junior. And today, I just wanted to speak about a lot of the racism that I've witnessed towards Dr. Kelly. And I think there has been some legitimate criticism, especially from my student peers who spoke earlier. But I think especially because she is a black woman, many people have jumped on to these legitimate criticisms and then mounted non-legitimate criticisms onto Dr. Kelly that are counterproductive and sort of obfuscate from the legitimate conversations that need to happen in order to have good and beneficial leadership in the district. And I think we've had years of poor leadership from white men, and that has not been addressed in any meaningful way, or people haven't nearly as greatly attacked those people. But as soon as there were murmurs of poor leadership in any aspect from Dr. Kelly, suddenly, the entire community got behind attacking her and trying to remove her or trying to discipline her in some way, instead of having legitimate conversations about what could be done to improve leadership in the district and make Princeton a better and more equitable space in the best way possible. So I think we really need to refocus the conversation to how we can improve Princeton and sort of get away from these non-factual and racially motivated attacks against Dr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Good evening.
We can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I couldn't hear anybody else. Thank you so much. I just wanted to speak, first of all, I really wanted to say that I am so impressed with the student representatives that have spoken today. I'm a long-term resident, and my brother graduated from Princeton High School. But I also have had the pleasure of knowing Principal Schmuel for several years, actually going back before he was at Franklin. And I just know his heart for the students and his just love and support for both the students and the faculty. And I only learned about this issue when I saw the report about the GoFund, I mean, the Change.org petition. So the early statements set to be in this meeting about attacks was all new to me. I'm not aware of that. I don't know what either websites or news are reporting on this, so I haven't seen it. But I'm certainly sad to hear that, but I do want to speak in support of him. I know that he is somebody who works very hard and really has a heart for the growth and this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. If I could just add, please just let us know the street and town you live in. Thank you.
Adam Wolf?
Hello, my name is Adam Wolf. I live in Princeton. I'm on Spruce Street. I wrote a letter to the board about this Change.org petition. And for me, one of the most illuminating ways of understanding Princeton, since I moved here a decade ago, was through a book called "I Hear My People Singing." It's an oral history of the African-American community within Princeton. And it's an amazing book for all kinds of ways. But one of the really resonant threads in it is describing the tragedy of the experience of integration of the schools. For many of the students who went through that, ended up in a school where the teachers did not care about them. And I actually heard it a lot in the voices of the students who presented earlier, that they really felt like they were not being seen. And I know that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about, gosh, why don't we have more AP students? Why don't we have more AP courses? Why don't we, you know, why are we thinking about detracking? And I really want to zoom out to this larger picture that the city has had a history of actually negative tracking of a lot of students who were sent into a life path that did not suit their abilities. And so, which is to say, we squandered so much of the human potential that is in this town that could have had such a kind of profound opportunity to make an impact in our world. And I believe what we're doing when we're thinking about equity in these schools is really providing a corrective to that, is recognizing that we can't abandon a segment of our students just to have a small number of elite students, you know, check off yet more AP classes. You know, and so what I really was heartened by when Dr. Kelly was hired was really that we have an opportunity to provide love to all of these students, that all of these students can be seen. And it really actually gives me great faith in this district that we're headed in the right direction. And so this is really kind of the context that I'm bringing to this as I'm watching this debate unfold and really kind of supporting the challenging discussions about how do we provide opportunities so that all students can reach their potential? And I say this fully seeing that the students on this call were making challenges to the board and to the district superintendent, but that really, you know, finding a way so that all students can be seen and recognized, I think is going to be a great guiding path on this. And I'm not saying to ignore the parents, but I think the students will really lead us if we're trying to do well by them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. And I just want to say, from my perspective, it's not an either-or proposition. So if we could continue on with Ms. Hubbard, and if I could just please remind you to set your timer for three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Eleanor Hubbard?
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be brief. Hi, my name's Eleanor Hubbard. I'm a parent of three children in the Princeton Public Schools. And I share the concerns raised by some other speakers about the definition of equity embraced by the district, equity as equal outcomes. Our children are individuals and have different goals and interests, as well as different needs. We were told at the strategic planning meeting last week that equal outcomes did not, of course, mean equal outcomes, but we weren't told what it does mean. And that has contributed to the degradation of trust between stakeholders in the district on the one hand and the administration and the board on the other. I urge the board to explicitly embrace a more specific and hopeful vision of equity that involves fully supporting the diverse needs and interests of all of our children so that they can all be as successful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Dodd?
Yes, thank you. I live on Witherspoon Street. I was in the Equity Small Group with Eleanor Hubbard and Jill North and some others that spoke tonight. And I do think, I wrote to Performance Fact after, and I do think that, you know, given the fact that there is a lot of fear and I think lack of information that's being shared, and a lot of parents haven't attended as many Equity meetings as I have, that they read a PowerPoint slide that said equal outcomes. The facilitator elaborated and explained what he meant, he really meant by that. And I think that the parents of students with IEPs understood where he was going. But I wrote afterwards to encourage them not to do something like that because I do think it triggered a lot of anxiety that was already kind of building up. And I did see that a former board member put into the chat the definition of equity from the National Equity Project, which all of the board members here and Dr. Kelly are very familiar with. So I guess my plea is, I think better communication will help. And I know we have hard-working communicators in our district. And I just also want to make a plea for more respectful debates. And what I wish is that the needs of the youngest students in our district, the future little Einsteins who come in with their backpacks on, that we care about them like they're our own children. And to be honest, I don't think that's the case. So I plead to my fellow parents, to my fellow white parents, to fellow moms in the district, to open your hearts to the potential in these kids. And think about them. You're no one is going to take away an AP calculus class. Please try to pause and open your minds and hearts. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Bolton, is that it for public comment for now?
Carl Sue, who was there before? Charles.
Okay.
Hi, this is Joanna Shu. I we live on Riverside Drive in Princeton. I have two children. One is going attending public high school right now in Princeton. And I I just want to express my 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 take on this whole equity report. And, you know, we talk about all of the parents' desire is to have their children to get good education. And when we think about, you know, what is a good education, we think who who are the ones that's providing that kind of education to our children in school setting? As a parent, first of all, I think that's, you know, parental job to to support the child's education. But when our children are in school environment, it is the teacher. And when I when I go through, you know, the report that was presented during the community forum, what struck out for me was student engagement. And what is the lowest score is that it says most students in my school do not pay attention to class. And hence, make me wonder why that is the case, right? Students feel bored in the classroom. Is it because the teachers are not engaging enough? The teachers are not paying in attention to the students enough? We don't know, but I think instead of masking the key issue of education in equity, let's think about what can we do as, you know, as as this district to elevate and 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 help our teachers to be able to do their job better and to meet the needs of our students in different ways, because we students come in different forms and different learning skills and et cetera. So what I'm trying to say is that we, instead of just saying we need to have equity or equitable outcomes, let's also apply that to our teachers, right? We see that there are many differences, variations amount, you know, even just just in one discipline, let's say math, right? We have variations among the teachers, how each teacher teach even just one same class. You know, there's some teachers who love the students and they they really, you know, show their love of teaching. And they're here to, you know, serve the students and inspire students. So I think we we need to think about that more than thinking about, oh, you know, how how do we bring equity to just focusing on the students? So that's that's really what I want to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joanna. And just please a reminder, please set your timer for three minutes. Ms. Jack Lou.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Paula Jackaloo, and I'm a teacher at Princeton High School. I also had two children go through the high school and graduate. I'd just like to speak if I could this evening and very briefly on what I've experienced here. There was a time that when I came to this school not too long ago, that I felt very unwelcome and totally demoralized. And I felt quite confident that there were certain people in administration that no longer wanted me to be here. Not because I wasn't a good teacher, but because they personally did not like me. That being said, there were a lot of my other colleagues that felt the same. And they left. They retired. They left. We lost an outstanding supervisor, Cherry Sprague. And we went through some pretty dark years. There was a lot of distrust in the building, a lot of fear. Colleagues spoke in whispers, which has been mentioned again tonight by students, which I find very chilling. I'd hate to see us go back to those times. We I felt we started to come out of what I would regard as the Dark Ages around here when we had very empathetic administrators come to the school, such as Jared Warren and Jessica Baxter, who have since left, unfortunately. And now we're so sad to see Maridola leaving. It's such a great loss for the district. I know that she's made such a difference in how I teach and how I deliver and how much more my students are experiencing science than they did before. And that's a credit totally to her. When I walk down the hallway and I see Principal Schmeele coming, I don't look in fear or feel in fear. I feel welcome. And I'm just hoping that we are guided with our hearts and understanding that it's not just the teachers that need the stability. It's the students. We have a lot of students that are very wounded. They're in pain. They're going through a lot with loss in their own families. I even just learned today that one of my students' grandparents passed away. And that impacts the entire family. We've lost loved ones to COVID. And I think that all of us just want to be able to breathe and have some stability. So thank you for hearing my comments. And I hope that you will vote with your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jack Lou. We have one more public comment speaker, and then we're going to move to our agenda. We have another another public comment forum. We have we allotted 15 minutes for public forum. I think we're going on an hour. So with Mr. Morgan and then we'll move on.
Hello, my name is Dean Morgan. I live on Hibben Road in Princeton. I'd like to say that it is important to speak on facts, not speculations. Principal Schmeele did not lie about his vaccination status, simply did not come into question and is also none of our business. It is rumors such as these that are causing problems with communications in the school, and rumors should not be used as evidence in any argument. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, okay, and with that, Mr. Bolden, is it okay if we move on?
Yes.
Okay. Where are we? We're on item H1. So now we're going to move to the business portion of our meeting where we're going to be by law in New Jersey, we have to let staff know whether or not they're going to be brought back by May 15th, which is the purpose of this meeting. So we're going to begin to do that now. And some housekeeping items as well. So item H1 is the ratification. And Mr. Bolden.
It's I I want.
I'm sorry, it is?
Yes.
Oh, it's showing H for me.
It's I refresh your screen.
All right, I refreshed. Hold on a second. Thank you. Wait, here it comes. Oh, it says join the meeting. Okay. Let me see. H was okay. So I write I1. And let me see, this is part of the consent agenda. So ratification of the agreement with our support staff union press. And everyone, please stop me if you have something to say. Six period compensation. Modified lunch. And I just want to thank the teachers for their assistance in staffing a three tier lunch at Princeton High School so that our kids could stay in school and eat lunch safely. So thank you to all the teachers listed for their efforts. We appreciate it. Item I3 withholding of increment. Item I4 resignations. I have a couple of things to say. With regard to Ms. Bajaj, I just wanted to say that she is she she has been with the district since December of 2017. She joined us as the supervisor of professional development and assessment from two that 12 December 17 to August of 2019. And she was, she took on the position of supervisor of science professional development assessment from from August of 2019 through the end date where she tendered her resignation of June 30 to 2022. It's my understanding that Ms. Bajaj has taken a position as assistant superintendent in another district. We are so grateful for her service. We've heard about her impact on our science program. Please know her changes will not be undone. And we wish her every success in her future endeavors. So thank you, Ms. Bajaj.
Can I say one thing?
Please.
Yes. Okay, so when I met Maridola the first time when I was first elected, I wanted to talk to her about design thinking and the creative process, because that's the company that I work for. That's what we do. And she was so amazing and so and so smart and so knowledgeable about that that whole process that gets kids to think a different way. And and it was it was delightful talking to her. It was delightful working with her, and I'm so gratified that she had such a great impact on the school. So she will be missed. And I just thought it was really important to say thank you to her for her service. So bravo.
All right.
Good luck to her.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yeah, so I bet you'd remember this. One of my favorite stories about Maridola is it must have been the spring of 2019 when literally every other day the state was changing the graduation requirements. And she would come to every meeting with like a stack of papers. And she'd go through it all and all and she says, but you know, it might change next week. And it literally was changing. I I have no idea why, whatever they were doing, but she was very determined to share all of that with us and made sure that we really we knew what was going on, but it was just it was a funny thing that they kept changing. But luckily, those children graduated, so we're good.
And I'll just jump in and say we thank you, Maridola, for constantly expanding opportunities in the Department of Science to all students. There are students who now are able to partake in the offerings in science and summer programs because of your initiative. So we really appreciate all of your work.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to just extend my thanks to Sandy Miller for helping me. Sandy Miller has also tendered her resignation. The parents with internet problems and problems with homeschool all know Sandy Miller, and we're very grateful for all her assist very patient assistance over the years. And I also wanted to say on the agenda for the board's approval tonight, did you Beth, did you want to say something about Sandy Miller?
No, I just briefly wanted to say that I just know Tim Charleston's also on that list.
I was just getting to it.
Got it. Never mind. I'll add more. Thanks.
On the agenda for the board's approval tonight is acceptance by the board of the resignation of Tim Charleston, one of Princeton Middle School's assistant principals. Tim has been with the district since October 2014. Tim first held the position of supervisor of social studies from October 2014 through May 2020. He has held his current position of assistant principal at Princeton Middle School since May 2020. Tim will be resigning at the end of the school year to accept a principalship in another district, and we wish him all the best in his new position. Not best.
Can I just say, and I I we worked a lot with Tim during the transition of leadership between different superintendents. When we had a referendum coming in where we had to figure out how to do vestibules in the buildings and how to create an overall safety policy for the district and how to make sure that we understood safety from soup to nuts, not just putting buildings in place, but actually trying to change the culture and make sure we wouldn't build new vestibules and then prop the doors open and other things like that. And Tim really stepped up and took on a new role and and did a wonderful job for and bringing people together in the district. And I do appreciate the work he put into that and his, you know, he threw that into everything that he did for us. And so we'll miss him, and I wish him luck moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I also just say thank you, Tim, for your enthusiasm for middle school. The last few years have been a trying time for all of our students. And we we appreciate, and I can say that as a parent and a board member, your attention to our middle schoolers.
Thank you, Betsy. All right, anyone else? Am I missing anything? All right, so sorry, I got a chat from a student. I'll be right back to you. Okay, so, sorry. I I five is PRA non tenured reappointments 2223. That's consent. PRA tenured staff appointments 2223. P presser revise appointments 2122. Presser reappointments 2223. Press a stipend reappointments 2223. Unaffiliated reappointment 2223.
It's an action item.
Unaffiliated reappointment, okay, is an action item. Can I get a motion? Betsy, second gene.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck ponder.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Epstein.
Mara Franceski.
Epstein.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hold on a second. Okay. Okay, did we do item I11 unaffiliated reappointments? Is that also an action? No, it's consent. Great. Item I12 transfer reassignment.
No, maybe mine I need to refer.
Number 11. I I said I11. Unaffiliated reappointments. That's a consent item?
Yes.
We're good?
Yep.
Okay, item I12 transfer reassignment. I wanted to say with the opening of the assistant principal position at Princeton Middle School, we have the opportunity to move a seasoned educator into that position. So on the agenda for the board's approval tonight is the transfer of Ebony Latimer from Riverside Elementary School principal to assistant principal at Princeton Middle School to be effective July 1, 2022. Ebony has 16 years of experience as a middle school educator. And the board believes that with this experience, Ebony will be a great addition to the Princeton Middle School administrative team and a great resource for students and families. Okay, so I just want to add that. The next item is I13 PAA non tenured reappointment. Can I get a motion, please? Debbie, second Beth.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck ponder.
No.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
No.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceski.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item is P, no, I, but I still 14 PAA non tenured reappointments 2223. And then we have I15 PAA tenured reappointments 2223. Okay, before we move on, I just want to congratulate everyone who's getting tenure. Back in the day, I used to have time to go through the list and and call out my kids' teachers. I didn't have time to do this. I did want to congratulate, well, I'll do it after the vote then. All right, let's make sure it passes. All right, moving on to item J1 formal bid award PHS coin towers, J2 formal bid transportation award. Anything? All right, K1 approval consent agenda items. Can I get a motion, please? Beth, second, Rob.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Shell talk ponder.
Yes.
Betsy Baglia.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceski.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Our consent agenda passes.
Okay, so now I can be the first to congratulate Keisha Smith Carrington on achieving tenure as the supervisor of language arts pre K through eight. Congratulations. And again, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to go through the list for the teachers, but the fact that you were granted tenure just shows that you've met our rigorous standards and you're providing excellent instruction for kids. So we thank you for all you do. And now we move on to item L1, which is public comment. So anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Mr. Bolden will call on you.
There are no speakers at this time. Oh, Veronica Oliveras Weber?
Hi, yes, my name is Veronica Oliveras Weber. I'm a Princeton resident, and I have a one daughter in who is a senior in the Princeton High School and one who serves kindergarten and one who is, you know, graduated and went through the whole district. You know, I I just want to comment and, you know, congratulate the students for, you know, for being so brave and for speak up, you know, for about their experiences, right? And also to thank for the boards to give them the opportunity to listen to the students. I just want to remind you know, when when we vote for for you, when you run for these positions is because we trust you and we trust that you're going to be doing a good job overseeing, you know, what the students and the and the district is going to be providing these families who, you know, who are very active, as we know. My comment is mostly related to the strategic planning and the core the core group committees that you have. And I was just invited like two weeks ago. You know, I was giving the list of the people who are participating in this core committees and the strategic planning. I was really sad to see the lack of representation. The one of the other things that I noticed is there is a lot of people in our community who doesn't even have children in our district in those core groups in the in the strategic planning as well. And also, I didn't see the educators who were directly with the students with the with the with the students in general, the students who, you know, who are the ones who really need those voices to be present. In addition, I didn't see all the principals included in these committees in either or the E L L teachers who really, you know, they're they're working closely with these students and they need to be there representing and you need to, you know, to include them in those in those, you know, in those spaces where you're talking about equity and the future of the district, right? So I just want to comment that like, I wish you'd take the time to listen more to the to the educators, to the students and work more with them because I have been in this district for a long time, and I have seen the school leadership spending so much money in strategic planning. I was part of the strategic planning with the previous superintendent. And it's like, continue doing the same thing, the same thing again, spending all this money, but I don't see results. You know, and not having more people in more people, more A's who are bilingual in the E L L programs is outrageous, right? That this is overlooked. And also, you know, I don't want to skip going, but the data, not including the Latinx community, is outrageous. So I, you know, I thank you to the whole, you know, for all the work that you do. But I also want you to remind you that you want to represent the students and the families who live in this district, and this is about the children, and you guys also need to listen to the educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Madhu, Madhu Cooper?
Hello, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, especially to this board. I just want to appreciate you all for all your efforts. I just want to speak a little bit about the personnel issues, and for someone like me who also employs labor, I know the season of, well, post COVID is a hard time. People leave for various reasons. As you may or may not know, there's a, they call it the great awakening. People are tending to do so. I want to appreciate you because it's not an easy task to manage teachers and you, like somebody said before, teachers are really the bane of the the school, the public school district. So I want to say thank you, but I want to keep that in mind to all parents out there and to any of the students out there. That is a hard thing to manage a team. It's a hard thing to manage labor and to get good labor is hard. So I just want to acknowledge that in front of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grace Zhang?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time, and I want to second the previous speaker and on the teacher promotion and retaining. A good teacher is hard to find. I know that I have, there's a lot of good teacher inside the the district school system. And in fact, my two children graduated from high school greatly benefit from them. You know, at to the point that they really help them career clearly and professionally when they come out to to work. So I just wish the board can listen to the teacher and fully support them and make them feel welcome, make them feel their work important and and support them. And I personally know Principal Shamel, he is a wonderful, wonderful principal and the nicest principal you ever get. I heard so much from the students. I wish you guys, you all could give him more support and being principal right now after the COVID is very hard, and the students love Shamel, Principal Shamel. So I wish the board gave him a lot of support, get things done, and so can move forward together. And the second point is on the recently hiring the outside consultant. And I have a question that why do we need to hire the consultant? We have a lot of people here that in the teacher here, the faculty here knows a principal, knows the knows the district very well. And and have we listened to them? My question is that, why do we have to hire a consultant from from California? Many of them never been Princeton before. Do they know the our our school district? Do they know what the problem are? Do they know what the achievements are? I have very doubt about that, and we spend so much money on this. And though those money can be used for a lot of program. And I know that for the science progress, for example, for the science program, there's a hundred and seventy students willing to get into the science program. We can use those money to expand those program. And I really don't understand why we need those consultants to come in, tell us what to do. To me, it's a waste of the time and the resource. I I hope that the the board can think twice when we spend taxpayers' money, and it really the board had to be responsible for us as the taxpayer or as the stakeholder and spend wisely and use benefited to our students here. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please just reminder, please just say your 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 name and your street address and what town you live in, and please set your timer for three minutes. Thank you.
Helena May? Helena May?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Thank you very much for your time this evening and for the work that you do tirelessly tirelessly to serve us, the school system. I understand, but it's like to be a public servant. I live at Lake Drive, and I have had two children graduate from Princeton High School and two more currently students there. I want to echo the previous two speakers' point about that Veronica and the, I believe, Grace was one also spoken, that, you know, we we have a public school system. Is it perfect? No. But can can it improve? Yes. Can we? Can we continue to support the teachers so they can focus a hundred percent on the students? Absolutely. And I think that with that in mind, you know, I think that the resources should be dedicated to just that, to to spend and support our teachers to further their goal to strengthen and develop our students. And I want to just quote some numbers based on the research that I have done here. In the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two school year, the school board approved about three hundred thirteen thousand for consulting firms. And majority of these expenses went for communications and media relations, media relation firms. Specifically, I think about, you know, if my number is right, two hundred and twelve thousand was spent on communications, community relations, et cetera. You know, this three hundred and thirteen thousand, imagine that being spent in the classroom, whether it's to strengthening our ESL classes, whether it's to strengthen Ms. Elias' class, Ms. Elias' effort to to serve our high needs community to improve their technology, knowledge and skills. Imagine using those funds to do that, to further, to provide further the equity to enable the teachers who are passionate about providing equity to the students and allowing them to do that instead of using the money to spend on communications firm. So I just want the board to think about that as expenditures are being approved. And I know that this this, these are line item individually, they seem to be small, twenty-two thousand here, forty-three thousand there, but then they add up to be three hundred thirteen thousand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Schaman. I live on Erdman Avenue. And I I'm just confused. I'm I'm very very, very happy with the the job that I've seen Principal Schmuel doing, and in the voting, I wasn't really sure what happened. So if I was just looking for some clarification, thank you.
Mr. Schmuel was reappointed.
Thank you.
Okay. As principal, so we're glad to have him back. Who's next? Claire?
Claire?
Hi, yeah, I'm Claire. I'm on Cedar Lane, and I was just curious during the strategic plan meeting that I listened to last week, I was just struck that there are fifteen point three percent, I think, of students who identify as per the graphic Hispanic slash Latino, and even if only like three point seven percent of them are E L L. I'm just wondering why out of this clearly gigantic pool of money of three hundred thirteen thousand dollars, why isn't some of that going to programming for these students who, from what I've heard from teachers at all levels of the different schools here, teachers are paying out of pocket for prom tuxedos, for groceries for the family, and I feel, and I'm a social worker, and I'm just curious, why would we spend so much money on a strategic plan that doesn't seem, and this is because I have not sat on in the meetings beyond what I saw last week, why isn't there a part of that that says, let's look at the whole child, let's look at the whole family, like, let's take some of this money and let's find some social work interns from Rutgers, for example, who can come in and help. Let's hire more aides who are bilingual and who can, you know, and also school counselors who are bilingual, who can help with the newly arrived students who may have experienced a lot of trauma crossing the border, for example, and I know that there are students who meet that description. So and with, I don't want to ramble in any way, but I just, I I'd like to hear where the strategic plan plans to address those needs, and I definitely want to be involved in any way possible, if I can bring any of the knowledge that I've accrued through my own work at a local nonprofit and from my social work training to bear on this, but I'm just curious what's in the hopper currently. Thank you.
Thank you. Parker?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that in sitting in some of the D I committee meetings last year, one that's that sticks in my mind is when there was the retirement of Lenora Keel. And while she was being honored, you know, she said, you know, in her decades of her work at P H S and in the community, that with all of the effort and all the investment that has been made, ultimately, nothing much had changed. And I, in the sense that I'm getting from what I'm reading, what I'm hearing, with all the expenditures being put towards consultants and communication, and the feedback that I'm getting from teachers who have been in the in the in the district for a long time, to quote one of the teachers just in the last couple of days, don't worry, nothing is going to change. And that actually is my worry. So I guess what I'm asking the board to consider is that is all of this much ado about nothing? Is all this investment going to just repeat what Lenora Keel last summer, you know, basically in a very nice way admonished the district for doing for decades? Thank you.
I can just say, I hope not.
Okay, there are. Sam Wong?
Hi there. Can you hear me all right? All right. First, I send greetings to you all through Zoom. I regret that we are not in person together. I don't have very much to say about the specific things that people are quite impassioned about, but I just wanted to ask a procedural question, and and it has to do with the fact that I've detected in the last few weeks that feelings are running pretty high about curriculum reform and about ways to to make the school system better for everyone. I've heard Dr. Kelly talk about in both and approach, which one would think would possibly lead to a consensus, but there seemed to have been some pretty strong feelings that have run in other directions. And I have very little useful to say to you about that, but I just want to point out that it's a tough situation to meet in a sit under circumstances where you all can't look at each other and talk with each other face to face. And that when we're speaking to you, we are divided. I don't know how many people are on this call right now. I can't see anybody's facial expressions. It's just super difficult to really understand the dynamics of this, and I understand and sympathize with all the difficulties that you are facing with decisions that are coming up and with all the good works and challenges that Dr. Kelly and Frank Schmuel and all the others have to face. But I just want to offer the suggestion that as we talk about equity and inclusion in ways to help all the students in our district, I'm just going to offer my own opinion that it's it doesn't feel like a good circumstance for building consensus or for even you all communicating with one another. And and as we're sitting here, I can't see other participants. I don't know whether they're agreeing with me or disagreeing with me. I think my camera is often there for you. Can't see me. It just strikes me as a difficult circumstance and and I and I offer you my sympathies, and I suggest that if there's any possible way to turn this to an in-person process, I I think under the right circumstances, it could turn out in a way that satisfactory to all groups. And and I send you my best best wishes and all the luck in the world.
Thank you, Professor Wang. We appreciate it. Just so we, you know, we're living in a pandemic and COVID cases unfortunately remain high, but I did want to point out that the core planning team met in person two full days from eight to four. And then, Dr. Kelly, I believe the instructional focus team also met in person. Is that correct? For a day?
The core and the focus, yep, for the first meeting.
And then.
Everything else has been online.
Yeah, Professor Wang. We actually, the board, we do meet in person, and we prefer to meet in person. We're just trying to find a way to to we get a lot more community engagement, which we really like on Zoom. We're more accessible to more people. And so we just have to work out the technology that would allow us to meet in person, but allow for access from from people's homes, because we do appreciate the engagement. So but we hear you on not seeing people's expressions. Debbie?
Yeah, so real quick, we had a total of two hundred ninety-four people on this call. There's no way right now with the way COVID is, we could be in the same room. Unfortunately, the middle school choir concert only was giving out one ticket because of COVID. It's only one parent could go so they could space people. We would love to meet in person. We really would, but I just want It's only one parent could go so they could space people. We would love to meet in person. We really would. But I just wanted to share how many people logged on and that's a lot of people for us to all be together right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. But we're, we're being guided right now by the Princeton Health Department and the town council and the library are also remain virtual. So, you know, we all hope for a time where we can meet together safely in person. And hopefully that time comes soon. And I think there's one more public comment, Mr. Bolden?
Yes, Oscar Torres, Serena? Hello, Oscar? Oscar? Did you intend on speaking? All right.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. All right. So thank you. Before the motion to adjourn, I wanted to thank Netting Chris again just for your leadership and for having, setting the stage for students to provide us with feedback. We very much want in a very respectful manner. So thank you. We're very grateful for your leadership. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, Oscar could not unmute. Could you call on him again? Okay. Matt?
Did?
Okay.
Oscar, go ahead.
Oscar's still showing as muted on my screen.
Yeah, mine too. Is there a way to unmute him? Can you unmute him, Matt?
No. There you go. You're, no, he has to be himself.
He can write to us if he needs to.
Kara, can you hand him the phone? Okay, all right. And with that, give me a moment. All right.
Me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Sorry for technical problems. I don't know what is going on here. So let me
So we can't hear you? No.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so sorry about this. Well, I just want to just to, to say that, I mean, after every, all the comments that been around and this today, I would like just to mention, to, to, to point, to make the point that something that you've mentioned earlier about civility and respect. And one of the things that we need to understand is that respect goes for both ways, right? So as we saw in the students' presentations, the patient or their patients kind of has from very, very thing. After many years, especially those POC students, that, you know, they've been always in the shadows. Finally, somebody comes along, brings them out into the light and shows that, and show them respect. And I'm talking about Mr. Smith in Princeton High School. After many years of being ignored, finally they feel included and most important
feel that they belong. And this is something that if we are going to ask for people to provide or to ask for civility and respect to officials, the officials need to also show respect and civility to those who serve. Let's remind you that people, Princeton Public Schools is a public entity. It's not a private thing. We are not selling product. We are helping and serving people, students, and it's complicated, I know. But those of us who have higher degrees, the board approve is higher in terms of understanding and showing respect to those we serve. In this case, I hope you guys listen to, to, to the students' demands. Because it's not just what they want. What they asking is a little bit of respect from those who are supposed to be careful of them. In this case, I think it's important to pay attention to that, not as a demand from there, from them, but as something that is a duty from somebody who is a public official. And if we are public officials and we have a higher degrees, we need to have a higher understanding that respect is important for them. And that is directly connected to the leadership skills in which that demands for us, for those in leadership position, not just to understand what respect is, but also to understand that sometimes we need to do our jobs by making sure that those who actually know how to do the job, those who have the expertise, the knowledge and the know-how deliver what they need to do or they do the jobs. And sometimes that has to go, or sometimes we have to work even against our own comfort. So we are doing our jobs, not because we want to feel better for ourselves, but we want to do our job by maximizing the, the resources that we have, that we know they're doing their jobs. And show, show and move things along. Sometimes I also, that work doesn't work for our comfort. But it works for the people we serve. And I think that is what leadership is. The, the, and I hope that with this in mind, at least for the case in the, in the, in the high school, which is, it has been a mess for many, many years. And we know that because we experienced that. Hopefully, finally, we have somebody in the, in Mr.'s meal that actually understands that, that they, that is, there is no time for programs or plans. It's time for actions. And he has done that with the students. And I, I, I hope he will have the opportunity to work without any constraint. And to implement all the plans for unity and diversity and inclusion that he's been including, by including all the students, mainstream and non-mainstream. The board now has a responsibility to show what they, what the board demanded at the beginning, respect, civility. Serve those who actually you are supposed to help in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. And with that, can I please have a motion to adjourn? Mara, second, Rob, all in favor? My internet go out? Oh, we're good. All right. Good night, everyone.
Night. Thank you.